I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Row called, finds Kevin absent. Cindy's not here yet, but she will be. So, uh, let's start with the administrative report. We have Alita Acosta.
Alita.
Alita, sorry. We can go to someone else first if you'd like. Come in, sit down right away.
The, that's, that's the hot seat. I told you you were gonna be in the hot seat.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry, I'm coming right on time. I'm learning the roads over in this area. And they all look alike, especially at this time of night. Um, I'm Alita. I am the new director of teaching and learning. I'm so very excited to be part of the TCU community. Um, it's been such a welcoming environment the last few weeks. Whether people on the school board have reached out or just helping me grapple with moving across state lines. I'm originally from Minnesota, but I've been in Iowa for what seems like way too long. I went down there for school. Um, met my husband, had four kids, and just sat, and then it just felt like the right time to move up to Minnesota. And my mother is so excited. Her grandbabies are close by. So, my educational experience, I, um, mainly have worked for Des Moines Public Schools. I was a fourth grade teacher, a fifth grade teacher, um, was a science teacher, an ELL teacher, and then was their K-12 science, computer science curriculum coordinator. And so, with that, implemented curriculum, trained instructional coaches, worked with admin, um, developed systems to better improve the students in Des Moines Public Schools. Um, and then worked as a system improvements leader to better support the MTSS structure. And so, that's where I'm coming from. And I'm really excited currently. I've been meeting with admin and directors to try to really figure out what TCU and their teaching and learning system is, and how to clean it up and make it feel, um, like a welcoming environment for everyone. The goal is that our students are coming in pre-K and they're leaving as 12th grade students, and they feel all of the connections between every grade level they hit. When they're going to science, they feel, and going from science to reading to math, there's this fabulous scope and sequence that feels really coherent to our students. It doesn't feel like a jigsaw. And so, with that, our teachers have to feel really well-supported and taken care of, and feel like what they're teaching is actually making our connections to our students. And so, I'm really excited to lead that charge. That's me.
She asked what she should talk about. I said, just tell us who you are.
That's it.
And then you have some questions for, um, we'll, we'll leave it at that. But she has been extremely busy. She didn't share that she just moved into her house the other day. Um, so, it's been, it's been a whirlwind, um, but she still has her feet on the ground.
Right now. Well, like I said, I've been, I was lost for a little bit, and now I can. I will, I will figure out these roads at some point. Um, but my oldest is five and my youngest is five months, six months. She's my fourth. So, it blends once you have multiple. And so, we made the decision to move mid-November, so it's been a really fast transition for my family and I, but we're really excited that we made it. Yeah. Any questions?
We're excited to have you on board. It sounds like you have a lot of downtime with four kids under the age of five.
And she got her doctorate?
I'm currently writing my dissertation. It's focusing on the renovasing of teachers. And so, with the teacher shortage, we're getting really fancy with how we're moving our teachers around. And so, the idea is when we take one teacher, we place them somewhere else because of their certifications. Are they as, as, are they as effective in that role? Or do they get renovated like a 22-year-old person walking into the profession? Um, in hopes that we can figure out how we can better serve them as a district when we are renovating them. So, that's, that's what I do on the side.
When do you hope to have your dissertation done?
Hopefully by next spring.
Wow.
I was hoping to be done by December, not this December, but a year from now. But the move, now I'm doing it virtually, so.
Dissertations are great.
It's so much fun.
Until they get to committee. All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have counselors.
And that might have been Alita that texted me. She's gonna be late.
Oh, okay.
So, I looked at that real quick. We were reading it there, so it might not have been Cindy.
Hello. Um, I'm Mackenzie Linehan. I'm the middle school counselor for both Montgomery and La Center.
And I'm Kristin Farr. I am the K-6 counselor in La Center. So, we gave you a handout with, um, it's a similar format to the last, uh, counselor update, um, that was given by the high school group. Um, schoolwide there, you can see we've got a lot of, um, a lot of SEL, social emotional learning, um, things in place. Um, got the Duck Cup presentation that was just finished. We're gonna do a Kind Minds one, which is through the same company. Um, that'll be for the younger kids. And the survey is something new. We're doing this year. We're using the Panorama, um, creating a survey, and just gave out the second, the winter survey. So, once that data gets in, we'll kind of take a look at some comparisons from fall to winter. Second step has been in place for a while. We've got Southern, Southern Minnesota Counseling Services. Uh, we went to some restorative practices training. Um, and then we just, we'll be a week from Friday, since we don't have school. Um, Hoffman Center out of St. Peter will be starting some counseling services in La Center. And so, they will be officing out of there, and they'll have both a skills worker and a therapist. So, we're excited about that and getting close to filling all those spots, so.
Um, Check and Connect is new to our district this year. Um, I'm sure the high school counselors mentioned it last time they were here. Um, but we do have seven mentors throughout the district, uh, including myself. Um, everyone who works with seventh grade and up was trained this summer. Um, we also have a student success coach, and that's his full-time job. She goes around to La Center, Middle School Building, the, um, Montgomery Elementary and Middle School Building, and at the high school. Um, she meets individually with students to kind of go over the basics of academics, behavior, and attendance. Um, those are the three main pillars that we focus on during Check and Connect in order to improve them. Check and Connect also, um, has a lot of data involved, and we track it weekly, including connecting with parents weekly as well. Our student success coach, Jenny Friedrich, did report having 40% of students have improved in attendance and behaviors. As someone who is a mentor, I can say that this past semester, I've also seen improvements in my own kiddos, and it's really validating. So, down to the seventh and eighth grade updates. Eighth grade registration, um, this has started this process. And they received a packet about the size of their head of courses they can possibly take in high school. The kids were intimidated, scared, terrified, but excited all in one. It was very nice to see the kids looking forward to something new and excited, asking questions about what they can take in our high school. There's a lot of courses that they have an option for, and although it's a lot, they're very excited to see all the different things that they can take. Um, in seventh and eighth grade, we also do SEL groups on anxiety management, stress, confidence building, and social skills.
Uh, and a lot of focus of my day is doing, um, small groups, and then I do classroom presentations too, as well as individual and kind of punting throughout the day with whatever needs to be done. But as far as my groups go, I offer 21 groups during the school years. Um, I do three for each grade level, and, um, kind of depends on what the need is, if it's a friendship group, character club. So, just some data from last year, that there were 83 students in K-6 that were in group. Thirty-two are, were in more than one group, and 20 of those students were sped students. So, um, kind of a cross-culture of different kiddos and different needs. And then classroom presentations, I do six in each classroom, so 42 lessons per year. Um, so I'm in the classroom a lot too. And I was gonna bring Olga, my puppet, 'cause she's kind of a hit with the little kids, but forgot. So, she's sleeping. She's sleeping. She is sleeping. So, so yeah, that's a lot of my day is, um, the small groups and the, and the classroom stuff. And then, of course, individual as well, but.
Um, I, being the middle school counselor, also work closely with our Avid program. Um, one thing that I found myself spending a lot of time was looking for funding for our field trips. We go to visit colleges, we go volunteering, um, we go to a college fair up at the Twins game. It posed a question of how do we pay for this? And how do we pay for busing? As you know, busing's expensive. Um, this year, we tried something new. We gave our kids the opportunity to run concession stands, um, at both La Center and Montgomery. The kids created posters, they created ideas. What should we sell? How do we advertise it? And then they got to run the concession stands. Um, it gave the kids a lot of business skills, um, talking skills, just being that advocate and leader. Uh, we also did crush cans in La Center this year, where they got to also do the same, sell, advertise, create posters. I showed Mr. Babcock actually earlier this week, some of the posters our kids created using digital media. And it was very impressive to see the kids show their creative side.
And then on the bottom, there's just, um, just briefly what the other three buildings are doing, and so, um, a lot of the same types of things, um, that overlap between the buildings, so. Questions or comments or?
Just clarify, how, how often do you guys meet as a, as a district-wide team?
We started once a month, and now we're doing twice a month.
And do you see there's more of a need for students needing more?
Well, yeah, and I think we were finding that like what they were doing in Lonsdale wasn't the same as what, I mean, we weren't necessarily doing the same. I mean, we're meeting some of the same topics as far as the needs, but, um, how we were going about it. So, we're kind of looking at how do we set up kind of a career curriculum, or how do we, um, set up an SEL so that we're at least hitting the same topics and areas. We might be doing it a little different at each building, but just making sure that we're consistent with that.
Each building's gonna have their own culture, you know?
Yeah, right.
And so, their learning culture, and it's important to have that characteristic of each building, but also be consistent across the board.
Right. And even some forms, we found out that we're not necessarily using the same form or process, so getting some of those things kind of ironed out too.
Good to hear.
Do you get a lot of questions from the eighth graders about registration?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure it's overwhelming. I have an eighth grader.
Oh, my gosh. I actually, this year, added a day. I went into the classroom, did a cahoot with all the eighth graders at both schools on the registration requirements, and the amount of kids who were upset that they didn't win or didn't know what they had to do. Um, and then we spent a good 20 minutes in each class. Take out your packet, let's go through the practice sheet, and decide what we want to take. And then, myself and, um, the teacher I paired with at the time would just walk around answering questions consistently. And I'm still, today I had kids in my office after going through that, but it's a lot of questions, but that's why I'm here.
Well, they're so used to it being done for them.
Exactly.
It's a big change.
Yep.
Decide your life?
Yeah.
What am I gonna do with my life?
Yeah.
They'll be asking questions up for the first freshman day, so.
Cause they still go visit, right? The eighth graders go to, come here for a visit, uh, towards the end of the year, right?
Avid, uh, eighth grade Avid does.
Okay.
And then, I know, like some, we allow some specialized students too as well, just to get, meet their case managers, but I don't believe as a whole.
But they get that full day, the first day of school, right?
Yep.
Is that when the?
Yep.
They have a tour this semester too, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. How is everybody? Good?
Wonderful.
Excellent. Well, it's been a busy month with lots of different projects going on. I'm not gonna give you a rundown of every single one, because it's a lot of different little things all over. Um, so the big buttons, object, or items. Um, we completed the TCU preschool video, which is live on the website now. It's just a starting point with the new videos that we're gonna have for each of the buildings as a introductory to TCU. So, that's just one video. Like I said, it's just the start. Um, we have, I shared out the new STEAM banners. So, with the new branding, we've updating items throughout the district, but we're doing one thing at a time, because obviously, to do everything at once, it would get very pricey. And so, as we're creating new items, we're updating the branding and the look and the feel in general. And so, we're sharing that with the different elementary schools. So, as STEAM is new, that was one of the first things to do. And a little biased, but I thought they looked pretty good. Um, another thing, um, coming up, we've got the posters for the band, choir, and jazz concerts. So, those are always nice to, you know, bump up the, how great they look, right? We have Canary and Roundup coming up. Uh, been working with Jean and Brenda, working on streamlining and, and updating the branding on those, and giving them just a little bit more of a pow and little zing to them, so they stand out a little bit more. Those look pretty good, too. We've got, coming up also, we have the St. Patrick's Day Parade next month. So, if anybody's not busy on the 16th, feel free to join us. Um, new this year, they're actually, we just found out that we will not be handing out treats during the parade, that they'll actually have a candy float at the end distributing. So, you just have to walk and wave, you know? It'll be great. Then, uh, community ed catalog is in process, and hopefully, um, it's done and ready to go to the printer by the end of the week if the crew proofs enough. And, let's see, social media platforms are doing phenomenal. This past month, we've jumped up 25% just with organic, um, touch points there, so that was great. And last but not least, I wanted to thank everybody on the board for all that you've been doing. And as it is Minnesota School Board Recognition Month, we have, um, certificates of appreciation for all of you, and a little thank you from the district to you. So, that's that. That's all I have for you today. Talk fast and sweet to give you the goods. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. What are the STEAM banners going?
Well, the, okay, so that we have two different, sorry, I should have clarified. So, we have STEAM pull-up banners.
Yep.
And then we have STEAM building signs.
Those are good.
Which are eight feet by four feet wide. Those will go up when we have some more money.
And that's, that's each letter is eight feet.
Yes, each letter is, so they're five, each letter is that size. So, they are gigantic, and they are all bright colored, and they're beautiful. They will be when they're done. And, um, we just, we have to wait for a little bit more budget. Yes, they are big, and so, we've got them play, ready to go mocked up for all of the different buildings. Um, and so, eventually, we will get those up. They're, they're are lovely. But the, but came in, um, their estimate came in at a little bit higher than we anticipated. Thinking vinyl to plexiglass or plastic, hard weatherproofing plastic, is quite the jump in price. So, we're gonna wait for a little bit, unfortunately. So, I'm hoping by next school year, we'll have them up, you know, turn of the new year, new kids, good looks, so. So, right now, we're just working with the, the pull-up ones, which are just as great, just smaller. So, okay? Anything else?
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. And so, yes, well, I guess that we've got certificates for you guys. Can we hand them out now, or we can give them to you later?
Hand them out now.
We need to update those pictures that we posted.
Yes.
I saw that. Yeah, good you said that.
One, one other thing, which I did, um, I was hoping everybody was here, so when you were all here again, I'd like to put you all aside and, you know, take a picture, so.
My professional headshot, can't we just keep using that?
Thank you.
Your guys is like mugshots.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. She wears suits or tux.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Ooh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get this.
Thank you.
I just.
You want to take these two?
Yep.
Josh can wear a tux.
Yes, we'll get, take some of these too.
Yeah, perfect.
Perfect. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Put those back here by my stuff.
All right, community ed?
Yeah.
Eddie, you're up now.
I'm up.
You're up.
It's always a good meeting to come to, and marketing's hanging out stuff, and we got food back here. I think I do have a.
Yes, you do.
Up there.
I'll, I'll, I'll get it eventually.
So, thank you for giving us, uh, giving me the opportunity to come back. I was here about two months ago, so some of this information is going to be a little bit redundant. Um, but, uh, just going through to the, the next slide there, I just want to list off, you know, majority of these programs that we do, um, for community ed. So, you know, we look at community ed, and we do anything from, from birth until, um, older adults. So, it's kind of a wide array of individuals that we, we work with, between preschool, early childhood family ed, uh, screening, youth enrichment, uh, youth recreation, sports, friendship adventure, which is our individuals with disabilities. Uh, of course, the indoor pool, adult basic education, kid zone, driver's education, adult enrichment, adult rec and sports, Special Olympics and trips, events, and activities. Um, just kind of a recap from when Kristin and I were here in December. Currently, our preschool, um, we have, uh, three, two cla, or four classes going on in Lonsdale, with two, five, five-day classes going on in the afternoon, two, three-day AM classes. Uh, we have two ECFE classes that are going in Lonsdale, which is great. And you've probably seen on, hopefully saw on social media here, um, about a month ago, uh, we had an open gym event in Lonsdale for ECFE that our staff hosted, and we had 82 people attend. So, that was pretty cool. That was by far the biggest event we've ever had for, uh, for that activity. Um, in Montgomery, uh, we have two five-day PM classes and two three-day AM classes. We have two classes going for ECFE, and we're, they, the staff is now gonna host one in, an open gym event in April for that event. La Center, we have three classes going there. We have one five-day PM, one three-day P, AM, and one, one two-day AM. And we have an ECFE class going this semester, which is good, 'cause we did not have one last year. Um, little bit about Little Titans preschool also, is we start talking about STEAM and everything that we are doing there. Mr. Jeff Ballman secured a $10,000 grant to implement STEAM in our preschool program next year. And we're gonna be doing three modules, um, next year, which is gonna be super exciting. Um, we're gonna be doing some trainings and stuff before school starts. And I think Kevin and I were joking that, uh, we might have to be a pair for a day or two when they're working on the robotics part, which is, sounds gonna be fun. So, yes, the preschool kids are gonna be doing some, uh, some pretty fun things. And, and just to talk a little bit more about STEAM, um, Kristin and I were chatting, uh, later this week. I don't think I shared this with Kevin, but we had a, a parent reach out to Kristin and inquiring about what we're doing for STEAM. Uh, she currently has, uh, four kids, two of them go to a different district, and she's gonna send her kiddo here in kindergarten over in Lonsdale, so, because of our STEAM program. So, that's kind of a, you know, kind of a nice kudos to, um, what we're trying to do with STEAM, so. Uh, all right, next slide. Um, moving on to early childhood screening. Uh, for those of you know, uh, that maybe had a kid go through the early childhood screening, it kind of gives you a snapshot of where a child is at. Um, this gives the school opportunities to work with the families for, give them referrals and resources. Um, and also gives us an opportunity to work with the child in preschool, and then, of course, when they go into kindergarten. Um, so, we do a lot of, we put a lot of emphasis on, on screening. Uh, this year, we actually taken a few days off of preschool during the school year to dedicate full days to, um, screening in each one of the communities, and it's given us an opportunity to increase work. Um, we're now being able to work more with the health office. So, Amanda Slotek spends a ton of the day with us. Uh, we have, uh, two individuals that come from, uh, Liston County Public Health that work with us. The Lions have been fantastic to work with, with their vision machine, and, uh, it, it goes pretty well. The days are typically full. I know we're in, here in Montgomery, I get kicked out of my office, and Amanda Slotek sits in there, so, um, it's going great. So, we got a couple more, uh, screening days that are coming. Uh, majority of ours, um, screenings that we need to get done, we get done before the school year. And the ones that we do kind of during the school year are the kids that kind of just moved into the, um, in the, in the preschool area that weren't on our radar before, or kids that go into kindergarten and haven't been screened. We gotta try to have them screened within 30 days of the start, start of school. So, some of these kids might not even been on our radar. They might not have been in the census, and all of a sudden, day one, it's, you know, we're getting a message saying, hey, we got a new kid in the center, okay? Never been screened, moved in from out of state, whatever. Um, so, so screenings are a, a big, a big part of that, and, um, we're excited to kind of have a nice plan for that. So, things are going, going pretty well. We always do over 125 a year. I think last year, we did about 138 screenings, so takes a lot of time, but it's worth the, worth the effort. Moving on. Uh, just some other program highlights. Our Kids Own Childcare, we have RAP in Montgomery and Lonsdale. There is no RAP in La Center. Uh, Lonsdale has the highest numbers, followed by Montgomery, then La Center. Um, our summer program, we take about 12 to 13 field trips per summer um, on Fridays. And going back to some of our, like, our Kid Zone, uh, numbers, um, it is surprising back in 27, 2017, 2018, when, uh, when the Initiative Foundation did their childcare study for 20 counties. Um, what the report said is almost exactly what our numbers show. Lonsdale has the highest need, which is this, which is what we have. And then it was Montgomery, then it was La Center, which, with Kid Zone. Driver's Ed, uh, we do three, uh, classes each year, spring, summer, and fall. Each class is 30 hours. Um, we have 110, 120, 20 students that take Driver's Ed per year. Uh, we drive with close to 100 kids per year for behind the wheel. Uh, we have three instructors, and we are very fortunate for that. There's some in school districts that have one, um, and some that don't have any. Uh, you know, we typically are a little bit behind with our behind the wheel. Um, keeping, you know, getting ones done on time or when parents and kids would like it. Um, because our, our three individuals that drive for us, they're obviously full-time teachers and, and they coach. You know, so in the wintertime, we don't do much of any driving, but, uh, the bulk of our stuff that we do for driving behind the wheel is spring, especially the summer and into the fall. So, we do quite a bit of, of catch-up that way. Uh, youth enrichment and recreation, so this is pretty broad. Um, I spoke last time we were here. We, um, we're gonna be starting a, a drama play for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders. Uh, this is gonna be part of a grant that we received from the Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council. Um, part of that grant is gonna pay to get that play started, and the other part of that grant was to bring the Nutcracker here back in December, when it brought all the students over, and then we had a community events. We have Math and Arts Club, Home Alone, classes, babysitting classes, tech programs, cooking, firearm safety, um, numerous other classes that we offer throughout the year. On the recreation side, just to touch on that, we have T-ball, baseball, soccer, flag football, swimming, swim lessons, camps, clinics. Evolve Sports, the, uh, the coaches here are fantastic to work with. Um, you know, so all the camps and clinics that they, they offer. Uh, sup, summer recreation and arts, we have 150, 160 kids that participate in summer rec every year, um, which is, which is awesome. We are very fortunate to work with all three cities on that, which I'll touch, touch base on a little bit, and then dance and some other, other programs that we do offer. Adult enrichment recreation, uh, so we continue with our driving here for mature driving classes, trips, quilting, Medicare work, will and trust planning, art classes, computer introduction. Um, again, enrichment can be a plethora of opportunities to do that. Adult rec, volleyball, pickleball, adult lip swim, yoga, karate, evolve fitness. Pickleball has grown, uh, for our district. A big part of the reason that is, uh, twofold. Uh, when Lonsdale put in their outdoor rink over in, um, over there, um, they left four nets out there, right on the, right on the rink, and they just leave them out for people to play. And some groups from, some people from Lonsdale just started playing, and, um, really caught a lot of, um, a lot of steam over there. So, they contacted us about coming inside during the wintertime, so we have a couple courts that, um, over in Lonsdale. And then, the one in Montgomery here has been going for some time, and then when the city of Montgomery, uh, resurfaced their tennis courts last year, each one of the courts got a pickleball court added to it. So, whenever it's nice, um, there's a, there's a big group up there that plays, uh, typically on Wednesdays. And when they, when the snow gets ready to fly, well, I shouldn't say it for this year, but when it gets cold, uh, they come inside, and we have three, uh, we have three courts inside the middle school gym, and they, they play on Wednesdays. Um, ten, pickleball is fantastic. It's basically a short. Pickleball is fantastic. It's basically a shorter, smaller version of tennis. And a lot of these folks used to play tennis and now the court's too big. So, now they step back and do pickleball. So. And if you're watching the Super Bowl last night, the babies were playing pickleball in E-Trade commercial. So, it's a big thing. Let's see here. Kind of moving on a little bit to friendship adventure and our Special Olympics. And every time I've come here before, I've mentioned kind of down to Special Olympics. We're one of like eight or nine school districts that actually do our own Special Olympics. So, that is a big feather in our cap. So, when I was up to our state conference back in October, some of the Special Olympics of Minnesota folks were giving a presentation and they recognized us and a couple of other of the school districts because some other school districts are really interested in what we do. So, it's, it's exciting. We have swimming that starts Wednesday night. We got fifteen signed up. We'll probably end up with twenty. Most of our sports, we send them to an area competition or regional competition and state. We recognize our athletes as best we can when we come to the board for Titan Awards. And it's really exciting for have those opportunities for, for those individuals. So. Bocce ball, unified volleyball. Unified volleyball is actually not a Special Olympic program. But Special Olympics does recognize it as a sport for our, our athletes. So, they will send down pins and certificates for them to be recognized. It's more, it's considered more of a recreation. Unified volleyball is typically when we have, like, there could be parents or volunteers or staff on the court with them. So, it's unified. And then poly hockey and then bowling. Friendship adventure is more of our arts and crafts, our games, bingo and pizza. We have that about nine to ten times a year. We have theme programs for the holidays. Tomorrow, we have our Valentine's Day cookie and craft project. So, Amy is making us like three dozen sugar cookies and we're going to decorate them at class and they're going to work on a project. We do a lot, you know, the bingo and pizza events are big. You typically get nine, ten participants with that. So. So, that's that for them. And then some of our other programs, which is always good to keep in front of the, the board. We are a part of an eleven school district consortium for adult basic education. It's called the Area Adult Learning Cooperative. There you see the eleven school districts that we are a part of. We are fiscally responsible as a district for that, for that organ, for that program, for adult basic ed. We are one of five of those school districts up there that have classes on site. Some of them are just too small, like Janesville and Cleveland. But Wasika, St. Peter, GFW, Sibley East, Lissaw Henderson, and us are the five of the eleven that have classes there. And some of the classes that they do is GED, diploma work, ESL, credit recovery, and job skills training. So, credit recovery, that is for like our high schoolers that, you know, particularly seniors. And the adult basic education world, we always used to joke that, you know, when, when seniors are getting into school and they realize, oh, boy, I might not graduate on time. So, adult basic education staff become their best friend for the next six months. And that's, and that's been great to see. I've had the pleasure to go to a lot of graduations for GED classes. Couple people in their sixties, a husband and wife. That was my last one I went to a few years ago. That was pretty exciting. There's something that they wanted to do and dropped out of school. The both of them did. Worked at the, worked at a foundry in Lissaw Henderson. And after forty years, decided to go back to school. You know, so it was pretty cool. Some of the events there, I mentioned one earlier that we did at the open gym over in Lonzdale. We have ECFC literacy night, fire safety night, breakfast with Santa. Of course, that's our big one. The Nutcracker, we have legislative meetings and our business partnership meetings. Community partners, the one thing with community education, you know, we do a lot out in the public. A lot of the classes that we start and programs that we do and the sports and things like that, you know, we rely on our community partners. I'm fortunate that I get to work with three different communities. All three librarians, for example, that I, that I get to work with. We do programs in the summer. We're bringing in the Rad Zoo this summer. They, it's a great partnership and, and we both benefit from that. The city of Lonzdale, city of Montgomery, city of the center, they're fantastic. And we work with them very closely and each one of them give us $5,000 for summer rec in each community. So, what we charge for summer rec is nowhere near enough to pay for everything that those kids get an opportunity to do. So, they are really committed to our school district, serving the kids in our communities, our youth and keeping them busy. You know, so now these kids get an opportunity not only to do rec activities around the community, but we're taking field trips. You know, we're taking a trip to the Nye Center, doing all these different activities for them. We're bringing groups in. You know, they'll get to participate when the Rad Zoo comes to town and all that kind of stuff. So, we're pretty, pretty fortunate to work with some great community people. Greater Mankato, area United Way, and the Rice County Area United Way, I spoke with Josh before the meeting started. We get money from each one of those communities for preschool scholarships. So, these are some folks that may not qualify for our Pathways $2, which we get about $39,000 a year. That money goes just like that. And this is for people that, you know, obviously want to send their kids to preschool and they just can't afford it. Maybe they just graduated and they got a mountain of tuition debt from college. You know, things, things happen, single parents, whatever. One person in the household working. And this helps kind of bridge that gap so they can get that preschool experience. So, hope that was my fifteen minutes. So, any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Okay, food service.
Wait for that to pull up. Alright, so we're at the half-year mark or just a little bit past. And we're looking for some feedback from our kids this year and also the parents and the staff. But we started out with our kids. Well, let me look at that first. Alright, so.
Just tell me where to go.
Nope, you're good. Alright, so we started out with the kids and we did something called the Menu Maker surveys. And so, we started at the high school in November and we sent them a survey on the Google Forms doc to the students, kind of asking them what their favorites are and all the different food concepts in the kitchen that we have. And then we asked them for like, what are you looking for on the menu? So, we did that and then we put those items that were their favorites on our menus in December, January, and we put them in February. The high school will have another Menu Maker survey that'll go out in March. And then we'll use that for the April and May menus. And then last month, we did the MK eight and we had some feedback from, I'm trying to think Abby's last name, our principal. Abby Brockway, thank you, that our sixth graders were like looking for some other food. So, we decided, hey, let's do the menu, Menu Maker concept again for the sixth graders. And we got some really good feedback. We had about a hundred and thirty-one kids that did that survey. So, that is on the menu this month. And then we are doing, the center started today and they're going to do school-wide. So, the students in grades, fourth grade and up, will take care of themselves. And then the students in kindergarten, third grade, we'll have the teachers and we'll get a classroom feedback. Same with Lonzdale. That'll start this month also. And again, we'll use that for March and April. And then out today is a survey that's going to go to our students, our staff, and our parents. It's on the website right now and we're just trying to get some bigger feedback, like on what do you feel about participation? What do you feel about the value of the food? If you're an adult paying for food, what do you feel about, you know, is it nutritious? And what are we looking and what can we do better for you? So, that just went out today. So, probably won't see that, the results for the next, I think they're going to be out for two more weeks. So, when I get those back, I'll share them. So, next slide. So, here's the results from our high school Menu Maker that we did in November. We asked them things like, again, the concepts, you know, what's your favorite pizza? What's your favorite specialty hot sandwich? What's your favorite specialty bowl? Tonight, later on, we're going to be trying one of the new specialty bowls. It's a Tex-Mex rice bowl that the kids are looking for. So, it's something new and the kids at the high school really like to do things that they can build their own. So, we're, we're kind of big on trying to find out what's going to fill them up. So, tonight, you guys will be able to try that out. Next slide. We also asked them like their favorite pasta. And believe it or not, chicken Alfredo is the favorite across the district. Believe it or not, but it is pretty yummy. And then we also asked our high schoolers, we have an à la carte station. And we've been having what we call a quick pick lunch over there. So, high school has three lunch shifts. It's quite a number of kids. We have two serving lines and obviously when they built that part of it, it was for the elementary. So, it's really hard to get a lot of kids through fast. So, we ended up taking that third station of à la carte. And we do offer like two to three different lunch options that they can grab over there and it'll be kind of a quick pick instead of waiting in line. So, we asked that question to our high schoolers and as you can see in the red are the percentage of kids that didn't know that that was going on. But now it's getting used a lot more and we've been advertising it more. So, hopefully we'll see a different number, different, smaller part of red on there. And then just some items that they were looking for. That's just showing the last response. We have thirty-seven kids that replied telling us what they're looking for. So, we've been trying to incorporate those things that we can do into their menus. Next slide. So, again, we had a hundred and forty-five responses. Those are the menus that we've put on there and those are the things that the kids have picked. So, we just kind of put it as a kids' pick. And then, but we're going to start at the high school with this survey that's coming out in March is I would like to find out what students might be interested in having like a student menu committee that we could maybe meet before school. So, I'm going to find out an interest on that because I feel like there's some things that we're doing that maybe the students don't understand. Or, you know, and we want to get some more feedback from our high school students and what are you looking for? What can we do better? Is there anything that, you know, we can, we can make for you that'll make you want to come and eat lunch and eat breakfast? Because right now, breakfast, we're at about a fifty percent of our kids, our high school kids, eat breakfast. We, our averages are like two hundred and thirty to, you know, like two seventy-five has been our highest. And then for lunch, we're at about seventy-five percent. We're, we're right at about four hundred, four oh four that come and eat lunch with us every day. So, we're just trying to figure out where we can, you know, bring some more kids, how we can get you guys to come in and eat. Because we like to feed you and we like to see everybody. So, next slide. Alright, so our Titans, the sixth graders, we actually had a hundred and thirty-one kids respond to that. I think they were pretty excited about it. And again, we kind of did the concepts. So, we asked them like what are their favorite pizzas and we gave everybody the chance to have two choices. It was a multiple choice that they could do on the survey, just so we get some more feedback and offer some more things for the menu. And then their favorite hot sandwiches. So, that was kind of interesting to see. And then their favorite diner items and their favorite pasta. So, again, you'll see the chicken Alfredo is a big, big hit for the kids. Next slide. Thank you. And then some cold deli entrees. That's something that we do, but not a lot. And just talking with our lead cooks at our elementary sites, we are, we do want to incorporate a third item and do like a cold sandwich or a cold salad. So, it'll be nice to get some feedback from the elementary kids, what they're looking for. I know at the high school, we try to offer an entree salad and an entree cold sandwich every day for lunch. So, we're seeing that some of the kids are looking for some of that stuff. And then there are some comments on what else they would like to see on the menu. And there's many, many more. And they're, they're pretty cute, the slushy icy things. These are these frozen smoothie cups of which we're, we got, we're getting in on Wednesday for the menu next week. That's a big deal, but for our custodians, it's, it's not a very big deal because they get messy on the floor. But hopefully the kids will be excited when they get those next week. Spicy chicken patties on tomorrow. So, I did put a note out to the MK eight staff, reminder, there's three options tomorrow. The spicy chicken is spicy. So, those little kids, we want them to know that if they're going to order it, it's going to be pretty hot. So, and then chicken nuggets, chicken nuggets, chicken nuggets, more nuggets.
This was sixth graders?
This was sixth graders. So, they got the watermelon in already. They got, yeah, so it's kind of, kind of cute. Yeah, there's more. Yeah, so, next slide. So, this is what the menu looks like this month for the K eight in Montgomery. We just put on there the days that the kids pretty much, you know, made, made their choices for the sixth graders, which has been pretty cool. So, I'm kind of excited to see what the little kids and everybody else is going to pick for their menus for next month. So, kind of, kind of see how that goes and kind of also see what participation looks like. Because they're the ones that picked it. So, let's see if they're going to actually choose and eat it. So, next slide, please. Alright, just some chef visits. So, in January, we had Chef Jamie come up. And she took care of our, we had a limited time offering last month of roasted sweet potato and black bean taco. It was a plant-based entree. And with that, she did a cinnamon churro with strawberries and chocolate at all our elementary schools. So, she was there on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday at each one of our elementary schools. And that's just a picture of her in Lee's Center for, she was there on Monday. And then coming up in May, we're getting a really, really great opportunity. We're going to have Chef John come out. And he does Japanese street food. So, he is going to be working with our high school for three days. He'll be there on site and he is going to be making Japanese fried chicken rice bowl. So, I know the kids, I know like the middle schoolers, the sixth graders, I know ask for really good fried chicken. But they're going to have to wait till they get to the high school and we're going to learn this menu and this recipe. But he's going to come out. It's like a three-day process to get it ready. We're really pumped about it. He's going to be here on Monday for the school board because he is going to be preparing that on Monday and talking to you guys. And it's super yummy. It's like marinated chicken and then it's breaded in potato flour. Because he kind of asked us about all our special diets and I shared with him that we have some gluten-free folks. So, he's making sure that's gluten-free. It's going to hit all the calories. And the biggest thing is it's going to be two and a half times the amount of protein that they normally get at high school. So, I think the high schoolers are, you guys are going to be wild. They're going to be excited and it's super yummy food. And then on Tuesday, he'll be working in the foods classes. And then he's also going to do, he wants to work with some of our special education and they're going to be doing pan-fried dumplings. So, that'll be really fun. And then on Wednesday, he'll be doing the Japanese fried chicken rice bowl for lunch that day. And he's expecting five hundred entrees. He told me that. He's like, he came and we visited and he said, you have five hundred and forty-some kids at the high school and you have this many adults working in the high school. And he said, I need to do five hundred meals that day. What can you do? And I said, we'll get five hundred in. So, word out to the high schoolers, we need to have five hundred. We'll get you guys pumped up for him. And there's a little background on him. He is a certified sushi chef and that's a lot of words to put together with S's and C's. He's also been on Food Network. He's worked with Chef Maury, Maury Moto. So, he's like a very fascinating person and we're really pumped because I was in one of my district meetings and they said Chef John's going to do a couple schools. And I was quickly typing in, I want him to come to TCU because I just think the experience that everybody's going to gain when he's here is going to be amazing. And plus, I just love to learn how to do that so we can do some of our own scratch cooking with some good fried chickens. So. Next slide. I think that might be the last slide. Alright, so, any questions? Alright, so tonight, we have a Tex-Mex bowl, something that we're going to be offering the kids. It's going to, after the meeting, but it's cilantro lime rice. It's a glazed cornbread bowl. It's pork carnitas. It's roasted chicken. Wow. And then we've got some pickled red onions. And the reason it's kind of Tex-Mex is because we not only have Sweet Baby Ray's barbecue sauce, I have some honey mustard. I have some enchilada sauce. I have some green chili. So, that gives the kids a chance to go Texas barbecue or they can go Tex-Mex with the enchilada sauce, the green chili. So, we'll be making those after the meeting and kind of get some feedback from you guys.
Can't wait.
Thank you.
Well, we're excited. I love coming with food. So, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're up.
You've got five minutes.
Good evening Superintendent Babcock, members of the board. I'm Carl Menck, TCU Director of Information Technologies. And couldn't be more happy to say no slash, no dash, no hyphen. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes here to share what we've done since July, what's been happening in the school year, and then also what we have on deck for another good, busy, and productive summer. One of the larger projects that we had going on is E-rate that was carried over into this year. Again, Cisco was, you know, a little bit lagging behind as a result of some. Again, Cisco was, you know, a little bit lagging behind as a result of some supply chain issues again this year. But we were able to shoehorn in and do a parallel network transfer of what we call our LAN switches. If you recall, over a year ago during the Christmas holiday, we did our core replacements. Those are the major aggregation points where all of these cables and wires and boxes and IOT devices come together before they go out to the internet. And that was the first step in a multi-phase process. The second step was to replace the edge switches, which is all the smaller substations, so to speak, or subpanels that then come after the core. And allows us to take again, all of this equipment and get it a pathway to the internet and also a pathway to our users' devices. In that, we had twenty-seven switches that were deployed by our team. We saved significant dollars this time on our E-Rate budget by learning when we did the core replacements by those vendors that came for contracted services as a component of E-Rate. And taking that learning and doing the configuration, deployment, installation and turn up ourselves, again, running those networks parallel while the plane was flying at thirty thousand feet between November and December. And now we're just putting some of the finishing touches on things like door access and segmentation and security. And that should be done during the summer months because they're a little bit more critical and potentially more intrusive to our daily operations. So that's our plan for the summer. If you go to the next slide. The next large lift that we did was focused on TCU La Center. You may recall during the time of consolidation, we had quite a significant difference between what was happening in Montgomery and Lonsdale and what was happening at La Center. And when we migrated primarily to end-user devices being over Wi-Fi, we found a very cost-effective path with a new vendor called Meraki. So we deployed forty-eight Meraki wireless access points, which were cloud-administered, cloud-secured and cloud-available in order for us to take those baby steps into the larger network integration when we had funding in additional years. It was time to forklift Meraki. Fortunately, in that time trajectory of when we had initially installed Meraki, Cisco purchased that company lock, stock and barrel. So it made a lot of sense just to go ahead and roll forward and put the La Center campuses, you know, or the campus, the primary and the, the K eight building there on the same fifty-five-twenty management network that we have across TCU. That allows us to keep a common architecture, a common SSID base, three simple networks that are portable across the district and also up our bandwidth and available resources for our users within the, the LAN and within the buildings. Some of the hardware had some salvage value. We found a vendor in Minneapolis that was happy to take that equipment off of our hands and, and cut Gene and Kayla a check back to put back into capital funds. And additional lifecycle labs used to the TCU campus also supported our team expansion or STEAM, excuse me, expansions. So with three classroom areas that needed a high-capacity broadbandwidth access for a lot of the technology and resources that were implemented as part of the curriculum and activities in the STEAM programs, we needed to have density and wireless coverage in those areas that before did not have any. So that was also part of that deployment project. Older web replacements also in TCU Montgomery. The older labs that you have at that particular, that's these little things on the ceiling, wireless access points just above your head there. Those were the first deployed around consolidation time. So a lot of years of utility out of those devices in the K four area. So I've been slowly supplanting those one-for-one with six or eight additional devices that we purchased, knowing that those were also the oldest labs in the district. If we go to the next slide. This shows you some of the equipment that was installed, you know, newer devices, cleaner footprint, much better coverage and the capacity to support the densities that we need and bandwidth that we need as we invest in faster speeds at the edge of our network. We can go to the next slide. So some of the segmentation and security that's happening on our TCU network and Wi-Fi virtual topology became available to the La Center site, having that common network to share. And we still have an umbrella SSID TCU staff that you can see when you fire up your devices that allows portability for those users, educators and team members that are from site to site and from, you know, across the district within their day. So the, the additional items that we need to secure and button up in La Center as well this summer is finalizing S and MP, Simple Network Management Protocol, management of those devices so that we, David, Lori and I can access them from anywhere in the district securely. Right now, we're doing physical connections, air-gapped connections until we can lock that down. Again, those are very intrusive processes. It takes some time and it has to be done kind of as an all-in-one lift. So we'll be doing that during the summer. We'll be looking at our IP schema at La Center to simplify it. We made a shim LAN, VLAN, a VLAN ten to allow us to swap out those twenty-seven devices. It was a bigger lift at La Center again because of having to do that migration from Meraki to Cisco fifty-five-twenty managed Wi-Fi. And during that time too, we're going to segment traffic specific to our door access system and our security camera system so that those are in unique VLANs as well, like we have set in place at all of the other sites and all the other lands across the district. One of the things I'll be doing is revisiting our Vigil, Vigilon Security Camera System as a whole with each site administrator, with each person that comes into a system. They have new observations, new needs. We change how the buildings are used. And their ideas and observations will be brought together with some moves, adds and changes for where we have our security cameras and, and sites and eyeballs inside and outside of our, our buildings across the district. And we can go to the next page. One of the other systems that we're going to be looking at and replacing this summer is our Cisco Phone Core System. So right now we have a CUC, CUCM environment, which is just simply Cisco Unified Communications Manager for those acronyms that we like to spit out in IT and everywhere else. We have a redundant host at La Center and our core host is just on the other side of that wall in our primary centralized data center for TCU. That hardware has been working hard for us ever since two thousand and ten. Again, it's a very long lifecycle. We maintain the equipment and keep it in service for as long as we can until something forces us to move. Now, this is what I call a one-for-one, like-for-like replacement. We aren't adding any services. We aren't adding whistles and bells. We're simply just replacing the guts and the brains at the center of all of the operations for what we have for our Cisco phone system, our SIP external gateways. And lastly, our InformaCast Emergency Notification Overhead PA system. Those are all part and parcel of that same system. So those are some of the bigger rocks that we have to, to get done this summer. And yeah, again, it's going to be just a parallel hardware swap. Very simple, very cost-effective, but necessary. And then next slide. That's one of the widgets, kind of a small box for everything that it does. We have one of those at La Center, that is the one that's in the La Center frame. Below that, you're seeing our Motorola radio repeater. We have a repeater presence at Lonsdale, at Montgomery, K eight centralized at the Water Tower. At the base of the Water Tower, we have a repeater. And we have a repeater also at the La Center site. We are adding a Motorola repeater to the high school site. Our coverage is now, when they did the Water Tower renovation, a bit shrouded and, and shadowed by the hill, the canopy and where the placement of those antennas were. So in order for the high school now to see that at angle of incidence, we're going to be putting a repeater here, which is then a failover for the Montgomery presence as well because we'll have an antenna on the roof. That will complete the emergency backup radio, bus radio, custodial communications and then cross-district radio presence as our secondary and redundant means of communication. And then our next slide. Okay, on top of the boxes and wires and widgets and those things that we hide in closets out of your view are the services that run on top of that. One of our big pushes this year was integration and standardization of access to all of the curriculum resources that we have available for teachers and students. The gateway and platform and dashboard that we use at the end-user side is called ClassLink. ClassLink looks at JMC, SIS and SMS software. You know, it has the JMC, you know, family app and then our student management system as a primary de facto source for data for all users, all accounts, all courses and all scheduling. With a long-time relationship that we, we maintain with JMC, I worked with, with Luke and with Bill and also with, with Matt Berlin on integrations for each one of these products that directly connect or pipe those data from JMC to these receiving systems that need rostering. And then on top of that, we have secondary applications that are added for curriculum that run and manage SSO or single sign-on for our students through ClassLink in addition to that. We tombstoned and removed CME RDC in favor of Panorama at the top and Alida mentioned Panorama and I believe our counselors mentioned Panorama that they're using for surveys. All of the data and porting that happens with rostering for those systems are pulled directly from our student management system. Brenda and our office professionals work really hard on our data entry procedures and conventions to make sure that we have common context, common language, common syntax so that all of these user accounts can be just ported overnight in nightly syncs. So next slide. Those are again partnerships specifically in red that we've engaged JMC as a development partner and pilot partner in integrating all of the new tools that we have specifically with their product. And next slide. Some of the services and software that we're going to be looking at and that we have done some housekeeping, housecleaning and organization since adding new staff members. Jav had some ideas specifically about how we wanted to see things in the door access server, in our virtual environments and AD and DHCP, working more closely with David and Lori in this past year. They had some good ideas for how we wanted to restructure our, our virtual environment and our host environment, which is where we run all these softwares again on the other side of that wall. So we did a lot of that during the fall, that summer, fall and early winter, cleaning up our databases, making them more efficient, creating more space. And then lastly, getting a data footprint that's small and, and light of foot and fleet of foot so that our, our backups can be air-gapped, secureable, recoverable and available to us in the event that those needs happen to arise. A Securely Classroom is another one of the products that we're integrating and looking at. You've heard about this, yeah. Phenomenal response from our pilot tiers. We started first out of the gate about six weeks ago with grades, grades seven and eight and then added the fifth and sixth grade about two weeks into it, once we got the kinks ironed out and some of the integration. Because a pilot you're doing mid-year, it can't impede classroom instruction that's going on. So we were very deliberate about our rollout. And now we have pilot tiers across the district at Lonsdale, Montgomery and La Center analyzing this tool. What it essentially does is it's a dashboard of any of the devices, Chromebook devices that students have in the district. And it allows you to monitor that activity, guide that activity, allow that activity, not allow that activity in real time. So the educator can have that, you know, first five, last five opportunity without people, you know, cracking up their Chromebooks and, and meandering to places maybe that we don't want them as educators, right? But also that weds well. And the reason why we did pilot on Securely is because we've been using the Securely Security Firewall Module for internet security and CIP compliance for about eight years. So it made, you know, sense for us to just add the module, save some efficiencies to turn this up. We're also getting competitive quotes from GoGuardian, another product that is in the marketplace that is operating in a similar market space, similar efficacy, excuse me. But what we're looking at is the numbers. At this point in time, we're going to analyze with Alida's guidance where we target this, where the highest area of need is, where it's needed, where it's not needed and, and do this in a cost-effective manner. So that's going to take some buy-in, some survey time and some understanding as to how we can roll that out potentially if it's adopted and supported district-wide. And next slide. Yes, so this is basically a snapshot of the dashboard of Securely. And you can see that it takes again, ingests all of those data for courses, students and rosters from JMC via ClassLink. And allows then those courses to be available and pinned by the classroom educator. And on the next slide, you can actually see one of those course sections drilled into. And you see your entire class and what is going on, on their screen in real time at any point in time. What's cool about that too then is when you have content, URLs, links, Google Docs, you can push those data to all of the members. You can share one of the members' projects as a screen back to the class and the educator can push their screen or mute their screen to gather attention and regroup. So it's a very powerful tool and I've been real impressed with how our educators have adopted it and tested it so far. And next slide. So summer equipment, refresh and imaging. Lane mentioned a ten thousand dollar grant for ECE. What we're going to be doing is supporting that grant for STEAM at ECFE by taking the current tablets that we have at the second grade level, which were intended for another purpose that was designed last summer, but never really got there because of, of transitions and other priorities during this year. And we're going to use those tablets at age-appropriate level for, for PK and kindergarten users in the STEAM program that's being extended as part of that grant. What we're going to be doing then, instead of our normal lifecycle replacement, if you remember when we do device Chromebook replacements, are grade five and grade nine. And that, that was driven by the fact that pre-COVID, most of the time we were having those devices, five through eight, stay in classroom carts and they weren't going home, right? We're finding, you know, a lot of device damage with these devices going home every night. And I've repaired a lot of Chromebooks this year, screens, keyboards, picked keys, cases. And we're hoping that through deployment and through a lot of the cultural changes that's happening at the K eight at Montgomery this year and also with the potential addition of something like Securely or GoGuardian, that we're going to see a substantial drop-off. Interesting data point, Kevin. The numbers of repairs that I was doing pre-Securely pilot, seven or eight in a week, just pretty high. Dropped down to about one or two a week just because, you know, they have an awareness that the eyeballs are watching. So people are being more mindful with their equipment. Our, our students are being a little bit more aware of, of what a Chromebook is and, and what it needs to do for them. So very good. Some of the other rocks that we're considering and, and getting proposals on right now. You see all of these boxes, wires and widgets in this context. It's very inefficient. We're considering having a two-camera install that I had shared with you last year. Other priorities in this year kind of tabled that project until we could get our STEAM programs up and going and running as we need them. So some of those funds were shifted towards those opportunities, which have been amazing in this year to see in real time and visiting the classrooms. So we're going to take a look at a presentation environment here that not only works for our board meetings, but also works for an instructional and multi-use space here. So mounting the screens on the wall, getting them out of our way, getting rid of some, some of these cables, having a more flexible environment also for community use, community meetings, instructional day, community education support. Drivers that happens here, fifty-five alive happens here. And it will make a lot of those things much more seamless and less prone towards those issues. At this point in time, we're looking at continuing some of the things that were initiated, things like Freckle, Renaissance Learning and, and the integrations that are happening with our student management system to help better refine those types of things and, and get them timely and, and within the twenty-four hour cycle we intended. We're also looking at some AV presentation systems potentially in the Lonsdale conference room and then also upgrading our, I call that the airport hangar dangler thing in the commons here at the high school. We've had that since two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. And there are much better ways of gaining eyeballs and using that space beyond what we originally are intended and designed at that time. So we're also looking So we're also looking at refreshing some of the presentation materials in that commons as well. With that, I think we got another screen, and this one's really fun for me. As part of the two solar constructions that happened this past summer. There was a integration component for curriculum for science, CTE, and careers. That Minnesota put in place for our science classes. And this is a couple screen caps of the app that's on my phone. That gives us a real-time readout of what those arrays are doing. And if you look at some of the numbers there, it's fairly significant. I mean, we got 8.68 megawatts of power already generated at each of these. The other one I think was nine, if I'm not mistaken, yeah, 9.54. La Center came on a little bit ahead of the high school. So you're seeing a little bit difference, a little bit of difference. The other thing you'll see is if there's difference in cloud coverage or brightness in the day. But what we're finding is that the intended design output of these arrays is met or exceeded as a result of those white TPO roofs that we put in place. Anticipating this a couple of years prior because of that natural gain that we're receiving. But these are the applications and data that our science teachers can use now for real-time analysis. CTE programs and career programs for those that are interested in alternative energy sources. I believe Jab and Ms. Kopp are working on the last site that's available for an array install, which is over at Montgomery PK8. And that's teed up, kicked off. I got the engineers, all of their schematics and design and drawings that they need to do the structural analysis. And then also the electrical path analysis. And that would be the last of the four campuses to receive solar. If you recall, Lonsdale again is solar gardens, we have four solar gardens feeding that. To date, our cost savings has been $30,000 as a result of those offsets from the solar gardens. So happy to end on an up note with some good evidence of hard work done. With that, do you have any questions?
I'm excited about securely. My school uses Go Guardian.
Yes.
I use it every single day in my classroom. I can shut Chromebooks off, I can get them off Netflix, I can redirect them, I can show students work, it is worth the money.
Yeah, Hillary, how long have you been using it?
We started Go Guardian when we, well, when COVID happened. We needed a way to monitor Chromebooks from home.
Yep.
And so that kind of came into play, and it's super easy to use, and it's really teacher-friendly. And students need to know boundaries. And you said that your middle school, our middle school building is kind of the joke of our district because of how many Chromebooks break. They throw them down the stairs, they use mess frisbees, they don't realize that they have to give them back. And so, yeah, we replace them at ninth grade too, but there's not a whole lot to replace at that point.
Yeah, some come in three and four pieces.
Yep.
But, you know, then there's a conversation that happens, right? But thank you. Are there any other questions? What did all that mean? No, I'm kidding.
I understood every single word you said.
Was it the D land or the land?
It's a lot of acronyms.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
I didn't really realize all the stuff that goes on behind the scenes just to make a computer work.
The infrastructure behind the scenes, yeah, it's pretty crazy.
I'll need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. I have a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Christopher Bleszak to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed, five, zero, right? All right, now I got the consent agenda approval of minutes from the January 8th, 2024 board meeting. Under personnel, we have employment ending, Brianna Baurnfiend, Montgomery, Sharon Brunette at the high school, Patricia Reyes, Adwire, Custodian. Under new hires, we have Ryan Miller, volunteer golf coach, Nathan Reed, band teacher, long-term substitute. Eleanor Bednar, fourth grade at Montgomery, Jessica Mediger, kitchen helper. Susan Rippe, teacher, long-term substitute, Haley Eastburn, teacher, long-term substitute. Andrea Mena Ocampo, paraprofessional, Maria Happenico, custodian, Larissa Happenico, custodian. Under leave of absence, we have Tanya Boomer, Lee Center, Lydia Guthridge, Lonsdale, and Sarah Costello, high school, Montgomery. In our memorandum of understanding, we have the E S S T Earn, Earn, Save Time from January 1st, 2024 for the principals. Approval of bills in the amount of $4,089,602.82. Which includes fiscal year 24 February prepaid, fiscal year 24 January paid, and fiscal year 24 January student activities. And the finance report. I will seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Josh, I'd like to make a comment. I would like to state that the fourth grade position that was resigned. As a fellow educator myself, I am having a hard time coping with leaving the classroom in the middle of the school year. I am excited to know that we got it filled, but that does leave those kids in a pretty hard predicament. So I wish them the best, but leaving education in the middle of the year is not something that is okay in the teacher code of ethics. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
A motion by Marsha Fronik, seconded by Trevor Hohn to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion is passed, five, zero. Open forum, I don't think we have anything today. And student school board report.
Okay, I'm Nisa Anderson, I'm the vice president for student council. This past month for January, we did a district-wide, the James in generosity, and our district-wide total was $868. Which I think is the highest we've had so far. I think it's one of the highest. And then a couple of us officers had a meeting with Mr. Bradcock last week. And we want to get more voices from our peers about what they think they need from the school, like the curriculum. So we talked with our advisor, Ms. Davidson, about sending out emails to past students that have graduated one to two years ago. And asking what they didn't get and what they think they could have gotten before college to get them ready for college. And then the other upcoming event that we have is we're going to go over to the middle school, Montgomery Middle School. And help their student council meet the next James in generosity. That's it.
Thank you.
Very cool, which is, you know, you can just listen about getting them more involved with our entire student body. What we talked about was creating leaders to come up. Obviously, these folks are current leaders right now, but getting a voice from all of our students. Obviously, we have certain students that do rise to different positions, but we have students that do a lot of significant, really cool things. That sometimes get lost in the shuffle depending on who the students are. So we're going to continue to work on how we can bridge the voice of all of our students across the district. So that they can share with us and tell us what it is that we need to do, do better, or the great things that are going on. It's good to hear that you already reached out about, because I always mention that two years out of high school, the kids have an opportunity to already have one year of college in. Or maybe they've worked already, they're in the military, and they could give us a better perspective of where we're at and what we're doing as a district. So I'm glad that you're already working on that. I think it's important that we have this group of students that are really representing us. And I'm looking really forward to seeing what they bring to TCU as we move forward. So I'm really, really happy to sit and chat with them and talk with them and have them do their work and be leaders. This is their gig, not mine. But I also like to hear from them and hear our entire student body share with us, not just this group, so.
Hey, I love that you guys are doing that, but wasn't that part of the portrait of a TCU graduate? Like the reaching back out to our graduates?
It is, it is on there, but it hasn't been followed up necessarily. And a lot of times that is right when they graduate, right? So when I freshly graduate, I don't know what the experiences are yet. So really reaching out to people that have been out of high school for a couple of years can give us a better idea of really where we're at.
I'd be curious to see what they have to say on what, you know, what they weren't prepared for.
Yeah, so we'll try to figure out a system in the future and how we can actually reach out to those people too. How we get, like, when you graduate, getting emails and then having a list and then being able to reach out, so pretty excited.
Ms. Davidson does have a couple, she does, like, a board of college students that come into our English class, or PC English, to talk about English classes options. So she does have a list of a couple students' emails that are not their old school emails.
Because how long do they get that school email before they cut it off? Is it a couple, like, after they graduate?
It's typically during the summer.
That's what I thought, because it's a very short term.
August, August 1st is what we've done prior.
So at graduation, prior to graduation, we can get all their personal emails, give them if they don't want to. But we get a significant representation of what that looks like between college kids, military kids, and then working kids. That would be fantastic, so looking forward to that.
It's good information.
Yeah, we got a dynamic group, so I'm really excited.
Thanks, Nisa.
Now we got the Titan Pride Award. Rebecca Weizen.
I think, do you have that?
Yep, I have her here.
Want to read it?
This is the Titan Pride Award for Rebecca, to Rebecca Weizen for creative and excellent leadership as the 2324 High School Spirit Advisor. Is Rebecca here or?
Yep.
Oh, there she is. I looked at her like three times too. She's doing an amazing job, by the way.
Sometimes to get the spirit out there for those school kids.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's doing amazing stuff.
Good.
Absolutely.
All right, under informational items, we have Sherry Allen, the strategic plan.
She's not here, we're still, we're still, her and I are just communicating, we're still working on that timeframe. And I brought it up in our admin principal meetings as to what that may look like. We're going to direct a little bit from our admin team to start that process, so we're still in the workings on talking about that. But potentially, and hopefully, we'll be starting sometime in March with more of a procedural aspect to that, so.
Right, then enrollment?
Enrollment, we are at 1769, which matches December. We went up about eight or so, or maybe a few more than that in January. We had some Southwest Metro kids join us, some of them left now. We're down eight from that. Looking at it, we are up four in K4, to do a quick rundown, down one in six, even in middle school. And high school, we're down 11. However, we had some go to the metro for some extra services. We had one that went to some care treatment. We had some go to online programmings. And then we only had one that open rolled out, but two moved. So we had some students getting extra services and extra help in some areas. So it's kind of ebb and flow, nothing too overwhelming at this point. And then Brenda just shared with me today, we have a couple more kids that'll be joining us in the future. So we're just kind of, like I said, ebbing and flowing right now just to see where we land at the end of the school year. And then Jean does a very good enrollment report when we get closer to summer. And we'll see where that stands with kindergarten roundup being done and where we are in that mix of things. So we'll see what that looks like. We just heard that we got a couple more students maybe coming to preschool because of STEAM. So we'll see where we kind of flow as we go, but it's been pretty consistent. It's just hard to tell with Southwest Metro and some of the shifting back and forth, so.
Community updates? I didn't go to the finance committee, so.
I got it, Josh. All right, one guess what we talked about at the finance committee meeting?
Parking lots.
Parking lots, all right. We talked about parking lots, moving forward, abatement bond, options, and next steps. More to come in the rest of the meeting. Update on TCU work comp insurance, e-mod, annual report and impact. Results of the TCU surplus item auction that was held. Review of staff and vendor contracts up for renewal this year. And then update on the solar install at the Monty site that Carl had talked about as well. That's about it.
Do you have the final numbers from that auction?
Yes, we are just shy of $23,000.
Selling all of our stuff?
Yes.
That's a great garage sale.
Yep, after they collected their fees and so on, we did pretty well. So we did pretty well, it was 22 something, something.
Southwest Metro, that's Cindy, so is she?
She hasn't, she hasn't been at a recent meeting, they're still in, their main talks is negotiations and finalizing what that looks like. So they still earn some heavy negotiable contractual items, but they're not, they're not there yet. So I don't think they've met, she meets next week, I believe.
Okay.
No, they did one, it was an organizational meeting though.
It was an organizational.
Yeah, they just did elections and stuff.
So not a actual meeting.
On new business, we have donations.
Be it resolved that the school board of independent school district number 2905 accepts with appreciation the following donations and permits their use as designated by the donors. United Way of Greater Makedo kindness booth book, first grade. Lee Center American Legion Post 108, community ad, $50. And Todd's Auto Parts, community ad special, Olympic, $75.
All right, I'll need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Marsha Fronik to accept the donations. This will be a roll call vote. Marsha?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Passes five and zero, sorry, I used to. Next we have a resolution for write-in votes.
Be it resolved, the school board of independent school district number 2905, Tri-City United requires that write-in votes for an individual candidate. But the school board will only be individually recorded if the total number of write-in votes for that office is equal to or greater than the fewest number of non-write-in votes for a ballot candidate. Everyone got that?
Do you have a second? No, I'll need a second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Marsha Fronik regarding write-in votes. This will be a roll call vote again. Marsha?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Myself is a yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Motion is passed, seven, quarter, five, nothing, five, zero. Next is the resolution for administrative recommendations.
Be it resolved, the school board of independent school district 2905 hereby directs the superintendent of schools and the administration to consider the reduction and/or discontinuance of programs or positions to accomplish economies in the school district as a result of reduction in enrollment and/or funding to make recommendations to the school board for the discontinuance of programs, curtailment of programs, discontinuance of position, or curtailment of positions.
All right, I'll need a second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Bertzow regarding the administrative recommendations. This will also be a roll call vote. Marsha?
Yep.
Chris?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Josh is a yes, and Hillary?
Yes.
Motion is passed, five and zero. Next we have a resolution for a public hearing.
I'd like to introduce a resolution relating to the proposed property tax abatement for parking lot improvement projects. Calling public hearing and establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the internal code.
I'll second it.
A motion by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Trevor Hohn regarding the public hearing resolution. This will be a roll call vote. Marsha?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
I am a yes. Hillary?
Yes.
Motion is passed, five, zero.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Stephen called for that, apparently they're making a motion to adjourn. So a motion by Trevor Hohn, seconded by Marsha Fronik to adjourn.
That wasn't Chris.
Oh, it's me.
I did the.
Oh, by Chris Bleszak, seconded by Chris to adjourn immediately at 7:30 PM. All those. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion is passed, five.
Some of those resolutions, okay, I'm following along, I stopped.